This is your right to vote at a regular council meeting of the town of East Texas. We have Tuesday, the eighth day of March twenty second, March twenty twenty-two at six P M. Thank you that we can be gathered here today in your name and serving our city. Thank you for everything you do and I pray for your wisdom and discernment for all of us in the big decisions that we're making and leading our city. Guide us and and show us your ways, Lord. Protect this country, protect the world. I pray specifically for the leadership and the people in Ukraine today. I pray for your wonderful and merciful protection on them. In Jesus' name, amen.
Allegiance to the United States of America as a republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
At this time, audience is allowed three minutes for persons to address the council on any topic. There will be no discussion or formal action taken during this agenda item. This speaker must identify themselves before speaking. We have one.
I apologize.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard? Councilmember Tolan?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Worel?
Here.
Councilmember Dickelbeil?
Yes.
Make a motion to excuse Mr. Ron.
Motion made by Mr. Porter, seconded by Mr. Bozoni, excuseless, she has opened her school today. Randy?
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Worel?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickelbeil?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Open for this time, audience is allowed three minutes for persons to address the council. We have one public speaking request from the D P R O S from the smart platform brothers.
Yeah, this is very good, fine, yeah. Hi, my name is Martha Gonzalez. With me today is Miss Angela Fitch-Paw and it's Stephanie Wilson, y'all may know. We are from Big Heroes. We're very honored to be here. We thank you for your time. We are a nonprofit organization. We started December two thousand sixteen and have since been going strong. We work with young adults with disabilities once they graduate from high school. And where our focus are three areas to provide continued life skills instruction, which is what they would receive at the high schools, and job skills training, and we also provide a health and wellness component. Along with the health and wellness, we try to stay active in the community. So today we're here to hopefully be able to get our request approved to have an autism run. So the autism run, we're hoping can be scheduled for April twenty-third. It would be our second annual because y'all most graciously honored us with allowing us to have our first autism run last year. I don't remember the date, but it was a total success. Would you like to add anything?
Yeah, well, I just, I've been part of this community for over fourteen years and a lot of people know my son Jason who has autism. And we have quite a few individuals with autism in our community here. And we also like to bring a light to just all individuals that have special needs. And so, you know, when we do this type of event, it's to include our entire community together. And, you know, if we will host it hopefully in the honor of Big Heroes because it does really fill a need in our, our community. And they're, they're about the only one in Cameron County doing anything like this. So, yeah, I, I, I thank the city for having the courage to say last year, yes, let's just do it. And we're looking forward to doing another one this year, I know we've talked about. So, yeah, but thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have already approved their request and the date is available, so it's already approved.
We would support.
Thank you.
New business, discussion, consideration, possible action, each of the following items. Minutes, consideration, possible action to do the minutes of February eighth meeting. Any comments or discussion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes, February.
Motion made by Mr. Ward, seconded by Mr. Tolan, to approve the minutes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Worel?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickelbeil?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Budget amendment, consideration of possible action to approve budget amendments for the performance.
The financials were great, love it. So, um.
Oh, I apologize.
It's at the bottom.
This is number two, sorry. Financial, thank you really.
So in your packet, you have the summer budget comparison. It's the one that you used to see that would be sideways, but I cleaned up where it can be seen like a normal piece of paper. And the only thing that's different on here is we did pay out the C D C salaries and eight thousand dollars the C D C did pay us. But they paid us on the fourth and I ran all these on the, on the third. So we have received eight thousand dollars from the C D C that they did pay us. So after I ran this. And then the next report you go into is just the expenses for each department. I have inputted all of the budget amendments that were done in January. I have also gone through and worked with each of the departments that were overdrawn or negative in any account and made any necessary end department adjustments. And any of the accounts that you see that are higher in where they're at, we've also discussed with them to make sure that they're on track or if they're going to need more funds that we might come with a budget amendment. One of the ones we're going to be coming at you guys with probably next month is the gas and the fuel charges. Because we're not, at this rate, we're not going to have enough budgeted for that. So that's going to be something we're a little high on. So I have gone through and made all of those changes. Then, um, once you go through all the expenses for each department, you get to the monthly check register. Again, this is the same, the expenses are from the greatest expense to the smallest and it does not include the payroll transactions. So if you have any questions there. And then it followed up by Crystal and I are putting in a new process together where we're doing our credit card tracking in a cash disbursement manner. Wherein that way we can see before, when you would run our vendor list, you would see how much we spent to the MasterCard, but we wouldn't know, say, how much we spent at Home Depot or anything that is paid with the MasterCard. So with the new system that we're putting in place with the cash disbursement, it lets us track our vendor history a little more accurately and a little more transparent. So you're not seeing, okay, we spent fifteen thousand dollars on the MasterCard, but we have no idea what that is for. And so what that does, and then what we did is we created a cash account in our financial system where we basically balance it like the You Would Have Bank statement. So that's why you see the reconciliation statement for the MasterCard. So each month when we pay the statement, when the, when the bank statement comes in, I mean, when the credit card statement comes in, you would reconcile it like you would a bank statement and then everything matches. And it's easy breezy in theory. So as long as you have all the receipts. And, uh, but yeah, it just, it just helps make it a little more trend transparent as far as where the expenses are going.
That's fantastic. But that's, we've been asking for that for a while. Thank you for that.
So if you reconcile the credit card that way now, what did you do before?
Well, we just, it was just done manually. So like we would, so the, the, the P O s would be done and you would have all your, we would reconcile it and you would enter it into the system and what we would do is run an unposted report and check the numbers. But there wasn't anything in the system that did it. It was just done manually. So, so we would put all the credit card receipts in and then we would run an unposted report and we would see what those numbers came up to. And if there was a problem, obviously, you know, then we would, we would fix it. But this, this will show the process, this will prevent it from, from, in theory, not being balanced because if we're entering them as the receipts come in, because before we were entering them after. So all the receipts would just be gathered and then at the end of the month, when I would call for credit card receipts, then I would start trying to do all the reconciliation and entering everything then. So now this eliminates that.
So it's a better check and balance type of system?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you for doing that. We've been asking you, every city manager to get that done.
It's just a different way. Well, I have, I have, I have one more question.
This is more, we can see what's happening.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's better, but it's the same.
Hang on, this, this, I think about whispers.
Oh, sorry. I just have one quick question on the police department. The ammunition, we're already at a hundred percent. Is that just the annual thing or?
So what, so what they do is they, they bought all the ammunition they have money for. At this point, I think they're okay. And if they need more, but they'll come to us. But they kind of, if you kind of, they bought it when you could get it. And so when, when it was available, they just basically bought their budget worth. So that should last the whole year and, um, but if we need more, but that, that's how they do it. Because it's so scarce right now, it just, they just spent a hundred percent of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So where are we at on the, on the P O systems?
The P O system is fully functioning. Every department head is entering their own requisition and it goes through the, the department head and it goes to Crystal, then it comes to me, everyone approves it. And they are all able to see with a click of a button how much they have available and it'll show them with what's already scheduled out in, in the system. So even if it hasn't been, the bill hasn't been paid, it'll show you what's encumbered and what your available balance is. And that's how we know, um, you know, that we're going to be about five thousand dollars in the hole for the fuel charges as of right now. You know, it, it, it figures it out. So once we kind of check against it, it, it updates it. So there's not a check that is pet that doesn't have a requisition or, um, on a finalized P O.
Yes, so in, in, in the library fund, account number six zero zero one five. We have seven hundred and seventy dollar expense with no budget. That is page eight.
Computers like. Seven seventy-two, that's the new computer?
That's not always the point about what it is.
Right, I see what your point is.
It's about the fact that you guys expensed it without a budget. And the P O system is working properly, that shouldn't have happened.
That my, my, my estimation is this was an expense that was done before I cleaned it up and it was one that obviously I missed, but I will look into it and see where it's supposed to go. Well, that's what he's saying. There isn't anything by the way, so there shouldn't be an expense there. So that's what it's going to.
So you didn't use any, so that could have been.
Well, so this is probably, it should have probably been somewhere else. So it, it, it could be just an error.
Yeah, thank you.
Wait, wait.
Any other questions? Moving on. Item three, budget amendment, consideration of possible action to approve budget amendments.
So, um, in going with the P O system, I cannot kind of check for these checks that, for the, the invoices that we got to finalize off the street improved, or I'm sorry, to finalize the E D A grant, the final payment for the cornet construction and Cruz's final bill and the E D A, um, the L R G D B C fees. So I am coming to you guys for a budget amendment to get those from the fund balance, which would, and then we also got a bill and for the street improvement project. So none of those have, were budgeted in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget. So I'm going to have to pull them from the fund balance. So in, in spirit of the P O system working properly, I can't kind of check.
So these are all things that the previous city manager knew that was happening because it was never presented to us.
Yeah, what, what should have happened is we should have made some sort of budget entry for the matching, not, not all of the matching funds for the street improvement because that's where this money is. You know, we owe forty-five thousand dollars for a, for the street improvement is for our portion. So we should have had some sort of line item in the budget for, for these expenses as they were to come. And then, you know, the E D A, that the, the Eco Tourism Center, that should have been done. We're, we're in the hole two hundred and fifty thousand, that's not accounted for properly for the books. We're, we're going to get it, it will be submitted, um, that they, by, that's going to go to the commissioner's court on the fifteenth to get approved. There's an interlocutory appeal that we agreed to when the, um, when all of this started for two hundred thousand dollars. But it never got, they knew the project was going to, our portion was going to be more than two hundred thousand dollars, but it never was approved. So, um, it sounds like they know about it, it doesn't sound like it's going to be a big deal, but they have to go to the court to get the increase because we're, our, our amount to us is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, four hundred and ninety-two cents and, or four hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents. But it's that, they, they're aware of it, it's on the commissioner's court agenda for the fifteenth and will get reimbursed for that. But, but in the meantime, all of that money has just come out of the, the fund balance without any accounting because it wasn't done until now.
All right, so you need sixteen thousand eight hundred for the street improvement project?
Yes, ma'am.
Thirty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-four for the E D A project. Right?
Yes.
Thousand for the, another, the admin fee for that, for that same project?
Yes, ma'am.
And then fifteen hundred for the Cruz's final payment?
Yes, ma'am.
What is our balance in the, in the fund balance? What is, what?
Well, our last one was by, uh, he and Mr. Carter's going to face through the hydro audit here, you would know. Um, I, it's, I think the, I don't even want to say, I don't remember. We don't have the final numbers for this year and where it was at last year, I would have to figure out the month, month expenses as to where we're at month to month.
But we do have a, we do have a, a draft audit, that's right.
Regardless, we have to come up with this money.
Yes, yes, yeah.
But my point is the account that you want to pull, pull it from, we have money in there to pull it.
Yes, the fund balance.
Any questions or discussions? I make a motion to approve these budget amendments.
I'll second it.
Motion on the floor made by the mayor, seconded by Mr. Porter, Randy?
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Worel?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickelbeil?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Item four, resolution twenty twenty oh seven, consideration of possible action to authorize the Laguna Beach Police Chief to submit grant application number two nine nine zero six zero four for the local border security program chief.
This will be for the board store, uh, we use for overtime, for all sorts of terms requirements within the community and locally and working with our tribal agencies, where as well, South Florida, Los Angeles. So we're all on the same page and we share, share intelligence to, to prime our community and.
This is an annual thing.
We have to do the grant every year to try to know, we gotta do it every year, yes.
Right, Joe, thank you, chief. Any questions or discussions? I'll make a motion to approve the chief to submit this grant. Motion on the floor made by the mayor, seconded by Mr. Dickelbeil?
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Worel?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickelbeil?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes, motion passed. Item five, resolution twenty twenty-two oh eight, consideration of possible action to authorize the Laguna Beach Police Chief to submit grant application two nine nine zero six zero four for the Operation Stone Garden, chief.
The Operation Stone Garden is, is basically a tour client and it's, we call it Bron assistance from border toll. If anything happens at the border, we will respond to there and assist them. And our, our big deal is one of our capabilities is Bella, the tracking dog. And that's probably what we get called for. It's also a grant that last year we got where we purchased the patrol car. Unfortunately, no, no patrol car, but it looks like we're going to get some gas money.
This is also an annual grant, chief.
Yes.
Thank you for doing all this extra work. Any questions or discussions?
Motion?
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the, we're going to use the police chief to submit grant application number two nine nine zero six zero four for the local border security program, Stone.
Motion on the floor.
Wrong number, but you get the idea.
Motion on the floor made by Mr. Tony, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez.
Randy? Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Worel?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickelbeil?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes, motion passed. Item six, racial profiling report, chief.
This is just to let y'all know that by law, all, all police departments need to submit racial profiling report by March first. It was done and it was accepted and just let y'all know it's up. By law, we have to submit it and it was submitted.
Any questions, chief?
And accepted.
Any questions, Mr. Ward?
I'm just a little confused. I have a different number on Stone Garden. I've got a three one eight, seven one. A grant on Stone Garden should be three one, I think, seven or eight.
That's what I said. I, I said I read a lot of the wrong number, but you get the, but you get the idea.
Just make sure that number's correct for me.
Yeah, so I thought, I saw four stars, two nine nine, zero six zero eight, and then it's, uh, Stone Garden is three one eight, seven one.
I got it wrong on it.
Yeah, it's, it's.
No, no, it's my fault. That's my fault. I read a lot the wrong number when I was reading my motion.
Just make sure you have those right in the minutes.
I will, yeah, ma'am.
It was totally my fault. No worries.
Item seven. Very good. Item seven, travel requests.
So we've got, um, three, uh, travel requests for you. Chief would like to go to the annual chief training, um, school. And he's given you his supporting documentations for it and it's cost nine hundred and seventy-two dollars to go. He's got fifteen hundred dollars available in his training budget. And so we would just like your approval for, I think he has to go to the school every two years. Is that right?
Yes.
Item B is the travel request for Ms. Uda to go to the annual Texas Library Association Conference. She has, this will cost sixteen ninety-five and she has two thousand dollars available. She'll be traveling to, um, forget where it was actually, Fort Worth. So I knew it was one of them. One of them's going to Austin, one of them's going to Fort Worth, I didn't know. And then item C is, um, I'd like to send Norma to the South Texas Municipal Clerk Seminar. This one's a local seminar. She couldn't be here tonight, so. Yeah, um, she, this one'll just be on the island, if that's the, is La Grande, it's local and it'll be a couple of days seminar, it'll only cost a hundred and seventeen dollars. And it's just the, just like I said, the South Texas Municipal Clerk Seminar, they do it annually. So I'd like to send her to that.
Quick question, the, um, remember the, the program we applied for to get cheaper rates for hotels? Did you use those rates? Did you use that program to apply for these hotel rates?
I don't believe, did, either, I don't believe either one of them. I, well, I think the, the rates, I think the rates for these go with the conference, like the conference does it. And I, I don't know if we can separate out if you book your room separately.
We, we might be able to because we could do the, um, conference we made soon in October, we could do that.
You could separate them out.
We, instead of two twelve, we can find one or seven or something.
I'll look into it.
So that's maybe we can get cheaper at times. Sure, and say this is even more money.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other, any questions or discussion? I make a motion, okay, we have to separate the ingredients.
We're all a bit under, I'm sort of like, if anyone has.
I wasn't sure how that works.
If any, if any council member wants to separate out an item or a council member only has to indicate it.
I make a motion to approve travel requests A, B, and C. Motion made by the mayor, seconded by Mr. Ward to approve all three travels.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Worel?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickelbeil?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes, motion passed. Motion's passed. Item eight, city manager job search, consideration of possible action to select candidates as well as available dates for job interview for C and position. This could get very pretty complicated, but I'm trying to keep it pretty simple. If each person can.
I'd make a motion.
Just one second. If each, if one person, if everybody can submit their five requests, we can cross reference. If there's too many, we can make motions. That's my fault, Mr. Carter, make a motion.
I can motion to table this. Until I get a complete report.
Is a motion on the floor, do I hear a second? Motion on the floor made by Mr. Carter, seconded by Mr. Ward.
And I would like to also say that I have a missing resume and I feel as though information's being withheld or something.
What resume is this?
So. I have two missing.
Which two?
I'm not going to say the names. We're not going to say names in public. And so. Because I don't have any file and then I have a list and I talk to other, one other member and they have them.
Is a motion on the floor, second?
I'm, I'm also late to, and not the same to. So it's just, as far as, I went through them and I just like two resumes out of the forty-four.
You just found out tonight?
I mean, if you knew a couple of days ago, why didn't you just go to the?
It's coming out now, you guys had it for weeks.
I mean, really, this delay, you just found out tonight?
How'd you find out?
I went through, does it matter? I went through every single one. I laid out the latest alphabetized list that I've got with forty-four names on it and went every single one and checked off whether I had it or not because I was.
Against what?
Against what I had in my packet.
You checked up in your packet against what?
You went down the.
Against the index page?
Yeah, yes. Against the index page and, and I'm late too. And I didn't realize I was because I wasn't checking against the.
Would you be willing?
He called me and asked me if I had some, a couple of names and I did. And then he says, well, I'm light on, and I said, well, I better check mine and I checked and I'm light two, not the same two V's.
It is what it is now. I just think we should have been a little bit more proactive. And if you know that you're missing something, reach out to the city, get them, they're waiting till now. Yeah, not really. I, that's, that's why I'm asking how long.
And we also have, we have one resume that's not on the list.
Okay, so.
Like this, this, it does matter because it's. The whole process.
So how long do you want to table it?
Until, I don't know, I'm not sure.
I don't agree with that.
I don't have the right amount. I don't have the complete information, so I can make a decision without complete information.
I make a motion to pull a five-minute recess. If you would consider reading some of those, I make a motion to pull a five-minute recess. Second, motion on the floor made for the recess, seconded by Mr. Ward.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. It was a motion on the floor, a second.
Right, it's, and it's, it's still, it's still pending. Uh, I mean, if, if someone wanted to call, you know, for going on that motion, pardon this one, that, we can do that.
We can also proceed after the recess.
It's still, it's still pending motion, still needs to be after, after the discussion.
Who did I, I'm sorry, who did I really love it? Um, mayor or Mr.? We're voting on the recess. Right, right, so, um, Carter said yes, council member Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Worel?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickelbeil?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes, motion passed, five minutes.
Six thirty-five, who's back?
Mike? Mike, can you? Yeah, I'm sorry. Meeting is resuming at six thirty-nine. There's a motion on the floor made by Mr. Carter to postpone, sorry, Mr. Carter, what, what, what did you motion?
To table.
To table the city manager jobs, seconded by Mr. World.
I'd like to. I'd like to table it until after the executive session.
Motion on the floor to table.
Second.
The second amendment to table the city manager jobs until after the executive session.
I'll say.
Motion on the floor.
So we're voting on, on the amended motion.
Yes, motion on the floor made by Mr. Carter, the second amendment made by Mr. World. When will I read that? Motion on the floor made by Mr. World.
No, if we're, we're voting on, on the motion made by council member Carter as an amendment.
And the reason we can do that is because you've got the mover and the second.
Right.
Just wanna make sure I say it right.
Sure.
Council member Carter?
Yes.
Council member Tolan?
No.
Council member Gonzalez?
Yes.
Council member Wray?
Yes.
Council member DeGaleo?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes. We'll discuss this. Item nine, consideration of possible actions approved on first ordinance, reading of ordinance twenty, twenty-two oh one regarding disposal of garbage, Randy.
So I don't think this is gonna get to be an actual first reading. I mean, it's the, the final language, but I can at least get to by to review it and see. What I'm trying to do with amend this ordinance, we have had a number of contractors come to us and have trouble with the, the flow of which our process is to get a permit. In order to issue a permit, we request the receipt that it was said, uh, recycling receptacle is placed on the property. Um, so this kind of, this is, and, and they, so they have to get that on the property, but then they're trying to pour concrete. They have trouble pouring concrete, obviously around the receptacle. Some of the lots are smaller, so they have trouble doing that. So what they end up doing is not putting the receptacle on right away, even though they're having to pay for it. And it just doesn't flow well with the process of, of construction. And so they don't, the receptacles is there in order to keep the job site clean. Well, there's, there's no, um, lumber or anything like that until they actually start building. And so this would propose that they can put the recept, and they have to start paying for it as soon as we make them get the receipt for it. So if they pull out the contract for it, then they have to start paying for it. And, um, so it kind of provides just an, an extra expense for them and for the person that they're building for when we have it out too early. So what, what I'm proposing is that they are allowed to get a permit and in the permitting pro, or in the construction process, they have their inspections. And so after they get the foundation poured, then they would, before we would do anything else, they would have to show us the proof of the receptacle at that point because that's when it would need to be on the premise because that's when the debris trash is going to really begin. And then it would allow them to remove the receptacle before they pour the driveway and start doing the landscaping. Because what happens at the end of construction, when they're trying to, they, they end up moving the recept, the, the bin over to where the landscaping is supposed to be so they can pour the driveway. And so they kind of, it, it's just, it's a mess. And so then they end up just moving them off-site earlier. So then they're at risk of all these ordinance violations. And so it's kind of, I'm trying to be, and, and this goes across the board for any, any kind of contractor that, um.
Well, regardless, thank you for that information, but since we don't have the paperwork, it's redundant and we'll just, um, move this to the, so we have the actual reading. Thank you for the groundwork.
So what's, what's wrong with what we got?
Well, I don't, I mean, I'm happy to read. I don't know if we can read it this way.
In terms of, if, if I understand your question correctly, the listing ordinance, what's, what's wrong with that?
No, no, what's wrong, what's wrong with the, they, they, the amendments that's been offered here?
The, the developer who brought this to our attention, the, the.
No, no, he's wanting to know why we can't read what we have, if we can read this like this.
But, but what I was gonna say was, we had asked him to identify for us the point in, in the, in the scenario that, that has created a problem at which, at which the, the receptacle will be available. I, I think we had initially called it the driveway.
That's, that's what it is. It's the driveway inspection. That's what they call it. It is for the driveway inspection.
Did we get confirmation from the, from the developer that, that that's the point at which the, in this new construction scenario, we would want the receptacle there?
Well, that, the driveway, when that's when they can, um, it has to remain, um, on the job site until they're ready to pour the driveway. So what they do is they get an inspection, um, it's called driveway inspection, but it's basically all lined out and ready to, to pour. And then at that point, they can move the receptacle off and then that way the, the concrete truck can come in. So that, that is what, if, that would be. So if we look at the file and there's a driveway inspection and it's passed, then they would be like, okay, they're good to have their receptacle out there, out their lot.
So, so if, if that, if, if we know that that is the proper point at which, you know, in, in the, in this new construction scenario, it would be, you know, easier or.
Yeah, no, that, that's, that's what it, that's when they call in for the driveway inspection. That, that's where it is in there. So that's.
I mean, I don't think there's any reason, I don't think there's any reason why, why the council couldn't act on.
Okay. I just didn't know if I needed something more.
Question. Everything seems, everything seems fine.
Yeah, the, the only change that we're, we're adding is the, is we're taking the, the one-size-fits-all scenario that existed in the existing ordinance and, and carving it out into scenarios where there's a brand-new construction, which required one sort of procedure, existing construction, which requires another procedure that is more, more, that fits better with our existing ones. But it, I, I just wanna make sure that.
But when, when I initially said it to you, I was waiting for that, like, you know, that was my notes in there. But yeah, I had, I had since confirmed that. When I had confirmed with, with Mr. Mitchum, that, that's where in the process and I confirmed on the other side and so I'm, I'm confident.
This is actually what we wanna do.
This is what, well, this is what I proposed.
Yes, and, and I've reviewed it and I'm happy with it.
Then I make a motion to approve twenty twenty-two.
Motion on the floor made by Mr. World, seconded by Mr. Carter. So the contractor said that they do not have any trash.
No.
For the whole time.
No, no, they have a lot of trash. And that was what, that's actually what started this was because I was addressing some trash issues.
Right.
And, um, so they, they don't have trash when they are pouring the foundation.
I don't believe that.
Well.
I'm sorry. I've seen a lot of, uh, foundation pouring. Um, they have to go in, they have to frame the foundation, they have lunch. If there was not even a trash can there, they will just put it in some corner. Next day it's windy and it will be everywhere.
Well, that, that, that happens if there even is a receptacle. I mean, but unfortunately, I mean, I don't, the receptacle doesn't, but what it does prevent, that the receptacle, the other problem that they have on their side is when they put this out there, then their trash bins become the new, uh, bulk and fresh and bulk. And so the neighborhoods use it for mattresses and, you know, we've had, we've had plenty of them call us and be like, you know, we're having to dump this and we haven't even started because, you know, we've had a couch thrown in that we've had, because, because it's not, they're not being using it, but it's sitting out there, you know, and so then it becomes used for the everyday trash. So one of my thought process with this is if I, I advise them, I will work with this and I think it's a lot, I think it's, I think it's makes sense in the process of construction. But I also said, I, I really need the, the trash, I need the calls to stop about trash, about, you know, being left around and, um, I'm working with them. And every time I've called them thus far, since I've sat in this position, um, any contractor that I've called have gotten over there and gotten their site, you know, cleaned up. There's a lot of work to be done, but, um, I told them that we'll work with them, but we get a lot of complaints about, you know, trashy sites. And so, um, I can work with them, but I need them to actually buy by using it, you know, and driving by their job sites and seeing when there's trash, you know, versus, because I get more upset by the trash, not the lumber. I get more upset by the, you know, Vader bottles and the, you know, obvious taco trash or whatever, but, um, uh, but within the flow of constructions, I mean, and this, this is just hard with some of the lots that, you know, Torrey Pines, I don't know if you've driven back there, it's, it's really hard to navigate. And then the other problem that is being presented is, um, Republic is having problems keeping up with the demand. Um, Gallery alone has seventy active constructive sites and so Republic can't always have them on the sites for this long a time. You know, and so they're having trouble keeping up the inventory for ones that are actually building. So it, it seems like, um, the, not a happy medium, but a way to address the, the amount of trash cans that are, at least we can have them all where there's actually active construction. And then we can try to enforce, well, not try to, I mean, I am enforcing the, I want the job sites to be as, as clean as possible, you know? We have to understand that the forty mile an hour winds will come. I walked over to Torrey Pines, I walked, and, and the wind was blowing and I watched trash blow from a job site and I watched trash blow from a trash receptacle. So, you know, I mean, I'm not saying it's, it's not foolproof, but, you know, we do have the winds to, to account for, but it can be, it could be better. But I'm not, I'm not unaware of that and I'm not.
And I understand that. For me, it's just if they know they are not responsible to put even just a small trash can on the job site, then they have to say that's nothing there, so I'll just throw my garbage.
I see. I mean, I, I, no, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I do.
Well, then they're still responsible to keep their, their building site clean, whether it is a trash, whether there's a receptacle or not, right? They can still be fined for dirty building sites or trashy buildings, but I, I hear what you're saying. But I, I guess this maybe just addresses the receptacle. Maybe we can bring something else to the table that's just regular trash cans. You know, the small green ones or something that will address that issue after, after the four.
We have, we have a littering ordinance.
Right.
Exactly.
So we already have an ordinance that covers that.
Yeah.
So.
And that, that's what Mr. Starky and I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry. But that's what Mr. and I Starky and I, and he was one of the ones that I talked to, obviously. And, um, I, I did express the fact that, you know, I don't, I, he has to be more active in keeping things, you know, cleaner and that, you know, but I'm, I'm trying to kind of extend that olive branch that, you know, um, I, I, we do get a lot of calls and I, I told him that and he, but every call that I have talked to him about since I've become where I'm at, I mean, they have gotten cleaned up and they've gone, he's like, you know, I just, there's so many going out there, you know? It's, it's like, he's always told me, I thank you for this. I get that I, you know, I've not had any pushback from them as far as to getting areas cleaned up. So I feel like, you know, this, we can work together and make this happen. Um, and I feel like, um, I mean, and I watched and looked at the job sites myself and I could see how it would be hard to get. And we require each of them to have a porta potty. So if you can imagine a, a row of construction, right? And they have a receptacle and a porta potty on each site and then you're trying to get the trucks and the this out there, it, it, I can see from the constructor's point of view how it would be.
Listen.
Yeah.
Mr. President. Um, when I read through it and I might, it just be me, um, not understanding correctly. So any other construction remodeling, demolition and, um, destruction of any building, so remodeling. So if you remodel a bathroom, that means said container shall be placed on day one of the job.
Correct.
So you have to order a big container. Because here in our area, the smallest one is a thirty, the big one, the big one.
Well, unless your contractor is going to take it off-site, like you can't pull, if you're pulling out your bathroom cabinets, obviously those aren't gonna fit in a regular trash can. So if your contractor is gonna pull them out and then take them and, and haul and dispose of them, then, then you wouldn't have to, but, but the, the problem.
But it shows that.
Well, but, but that, that's the point of that is you have to have that if you're going to be pulling out and demo, demoing. If you don't have to set it there, if your contractor is gonna take it out of your house and take it away, I mean, that, that's.
But it reads that as soon as you get the permit for a remodel job, you need to have this container in your driveway.
Yeah. Well, we do that because people, if we don't, then people will remodel and have your cabinet sitting on the front, um, on the front and down.
But you understand this container is nearly as long as this room.
Well, you can.
Right?
Okay, there are smaller ones, but that's maybe a legal question, Mr. Rosina.
And there are no smaller ones.
Well, I mean, we, I mean, we're, we're certainly talking about, uh, an adjustment of, of the burden, you know, to, to, to be more, um, you know, less stringent upon, upon the, the contractor and, and shift that burden toward, uh, toward the, the public sector. And so the, the, we're, the adjustment goes, I guess, in the other way when it comes to the, the requirement for, for the, uh, for the receptacle, you know, uh, at, at the first instance, whenever you're talking about an existing, existing job. That was, that was already a feature of, of our ordinance. Um, I, I guess the, the, the question is whether or not, you know, there are types of remodeling that, that would not require a permit and anything that would require a permit would, you know, as always, trigger, triggered that requirement. Um, I, I, I didn't, I didn't specifically look at, at the, whether the, the trigger on, on the remodeling permit applies whenever someone does anything that might locally be considered remodeling, like if a homeowner goes in and just wants to repaint the bathroom. I, I don't think that's something that, that would require a permit, uh, but certainly anyone going in to do the job, you know, uh, is gonna know what does and what doesn't require a permit or anything that, that triggered the requirement. Yeah, would require the receptacle. Of course, that's always been the case. So that, that part's not, that part's not changing. The only thing that's changing is the lessening of the burden on, on the contractor.
Yeah, so the size of the job will, will, will require a permit. Right. At the point that we're just requiring a permit, it will require a receptacle. But then it said, if the contractor says I will haul it away, then you don't need.
No, I, that's, that's probably the, the type of construction that doesn't need a permit, which is like, okay, let me, I don't, I get it. You see what I'm saying? It's something that doesn't require a permit, so it wouldn't require a receptacle. That's all I understand.
There, there are levels of work. I mean, the, where, where it comes to our attention, where there's an enforcement aspect to it. If someone engages in a job that, that, that requires a permit under ordinance, doesn't get a permit and then we have some enforcement issue that, that, that comes to our attention, uh, debris being left out, out in the yard, you know, from a job that takes several days. At that point, you know, the, the, our, our enforcement arm, you know, will address that issue and also address the issue of failure to, to get a permit where one might have been required. Um, if it doesn't, if it, if it doesn't come to our attention, then it, it, it doesn't, it's not an issue. But, but we're not, we're not changing that aspect of, of the ordinance, uh, that, that, that dealt with the receptacle requirements when you have an, an existing structure, when it's not new construction. It's only, the, what, what we were asked by the, by the local developers was to, to lessen the burden in situations where, where, where they're, where they're new construction because it was impractical to, to meet the, the requirements of ordinance in certain, in certain circumstances. Um, they, I don't, I don't think we got a complaint, uh, Randy, about the requirement for receptacles on other types of jobs. Where, where it wasn't a problem to move this on.
And the only thing, the receipt is only required of.
Does that answer your question, Mr.? Okay, there's a motion on the floor made by, um, who made the motion?
Um, I have, uh, council member Wray made the motion.
A motion on the floor made by Mr. World, seconded by Mr. Carter to approve the.
Council member Carter? Council member Carter?
Yes.
Council member Tolan?
Yes.
Council member Gonzalez?
Yes.
Council member Wray?
Yes.
Council member DeGaleo?
No.
Mayor Smith?
Yes, motion passes. Yeah, what's the first reading, Mr.? It's just the first reading of the member, so we can still change things. Item Z, RFP, RFP, consideration of possible actions for authorization to issue requests for proposals for administrative services and request for qualifications for engineering services related to community development block grant.
So this is, um, one of the grants that we are asking Grant Works to go out for us. We do have a Grant Works representative with us tonight. So I'll just give you a little introduction and then I will let him do the, the heavy talking. But this is a grant that I would like for us to go out for. It is going to help with the infrastructure and it is as a result of the tropical storm Amelda that we have this opportunity. So if you want to take over, I will let you. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mr. Eric Sember, I'm with, uh, Grant Works. And, uh, actually, we're not supposed to say very much when you're going out for RFPs or RFPs. But, um, Grant Works has been around since nineteen seventy-nine and we're over two hundred and fifty people and we do this type of work. But it's up to you to decide who you're going to choose. We have all kinds of people available in different areas of, of the state. There's a lot of people in this area that are do, they do, uh, the project management. And, uh, and I guess they'll be in touch with, uh, the project or rather city management.
Yes, sir. We, um, yes, we, we, thank you for that information. I think what would help us if you just give us a quick summary of what this grant is about.
Oh, with the grant?
Yes, we, um, understand that you can't say much or that we have to pick somebody else, but we would like, just if you can just quickly give us a short version of what this grant is and, and why you think we would apply or would be successful.
give us a short version of what this grant is and, and why you think we would apply, or would be successful.
That's probably the, the area where I'm short on, because a lot of times what happens is that these people will just send somebody out here to represent. And have they sent some information to you?
Okay, yeah, let, yeah, I'll, I'll, I, I thought that, um, or I had said you would be able to present it, so that's why I was gonna defer to you, but I, I can so this is what I'm going to, uh, suggest that we go out for. This is going to help with, um, flood control and drainage repair and, um, infrastructure improvements. This grant, I think, would be applicable to, um, the Marina. And I will tell you because the seawalls, we, we talked with, um, Grant Works on Friday out at the Marina. And, um, the seawall is, we think, should be considered infrastructure as part of the city. So, that, that, I believe we're eligible for the structure, um, or the infrastructure for the seawall, that's one of the, the things I would like to apply this grant for. And in addition to the drainage, um, the drainage, we can relate back to the storm and the damage that it caused. And so, the drainage is part of the city, and so it is not, just because it's in the Marina does not mean it is the Marina, that is not the Marina. So, I would like to go out for these grants, um, not only for, you know, whatever money we can get for drainage and, and help with the city throughout, but I would like to focus on what we can fix within the Marina for this money or with this money. And then that way, the, the other funds that I'll propose later would be with the ARPA money can go further. So, um, this is what we're going to go out for, so the RQ, I'm asking for the approval for them too. It, it varies, um, it's, it's an eighty-twenty, and I think it goes up to, I think this one was well, the infrastructure allocation is fifty-seven million, but you know, who knows what, what percentage of that we would get, I'm trying to she couldn't give me much, ma- maximum award is one million, but we can do two applications.
Do one for the drainage, one for the seawall?
Right, so we can do one, yes, exactly.
And that's considered city infrastructure, not necessarily the Marina.
And that's, yeah, no, it would not, I'm not, it's, it, in my, it's city infrastructure, and that's how I'm proposing it, that's how, um, you know, when you read everything, you know, it's, it's on our city land, it's on our city, you know, responsibility. So, I don't believe that that should fall in within, just because it is in the Marina, it is not the actual Marina, so.
That's what we're thinking for a while.
And I think there was anyways, this little problem with the drainage coming from the park into the Marina.
Yes.
So, this needs to be-
The drainage, that, that's the drainage that would be the, the, the one application and then the, the damage that caused to the seawall that is the town's infrastructure, uh, would be the others.
Correct, that, yes, and so that's what I would do.
Any other questions? I'll make a motion to approve, second. Motion on the floor made by the mayor, second of the most stolen to go for RFPs or RFPs for engineering service regarding the block.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry that I didn't have any more information.
No, that's fine.
Thank you.
She gave it those, thank you, sir.
Uh, Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Worrell?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGaleo?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes, motion passes. Item eleven municipal for consideration regarding authorization for community service to indigenous defendants as the last resort option to pay citation. Randy.
So, um, this is just we have, in my city manager report, you will see, we have issued over three hundred warrants. And so, we are going to be doing a warrant roundup very soon. And the judge and Norma and I were talking about that we haven't ever offered community service as a way to, um, pay back your citations in the past. I don't know why, uh, none of us know why, so I'm coming to you guys to see Judge Hunter said that it would be, um, the board's decision if we were to say yes, and these are the organizations that you can serve at, that would, um, consist as time served or your community service and, and and the rate, you know, what, how many hours each and what. So, um, this is more just on the board of, of, to think about and maybe if there's, you know, discussion about if that's something we would want to do. Um, you know, there's, there's some people that are just never going to be able to pay, and at this point their fines are fines on top of fines and, you know, so if there's a couple organizations locally that, you know, pet shelters or anything that is that we think would be, i- if we want, or we just, we don't, I mean, we haven't in the past, it was just, uh, an option to throw out there because I know since we're reporting them now, the way they are supposed to be reported, at some point, these people won't be able to redo their driver's license, and some people, you know, this will prohibit them at some point in their life. So, if we want to give them another option.
You talked to Judge Hunter?
I did, Judge Hunter is the one that suggested that I come to, to you guys, he said he's, he's fine with whatever you want, he just, um, when we started, you know, his direction was that we don't offer community service, so that's why he's never offered it, but he's not against it, but we would need to decide as a board what are the approved agencies that, um, that would be considered approved agencies to do your community service and what we want to give the, the dollar to, you know, ratio.
Do we know, do we know from other cities who is offering that, maybe we can check them out and see and ask them, because I'm, I, I like the idea, it's just who, there will be additional work for somebody.
Right, right, yes, and, um, that we would obviously have to contact those organizations and see if they would even be willing to do that, so it's not just a cut and dry um, process, but I wanted to throw it out there to see if there's any interest before we, we waste the man-hours of doing, of doing that research because and, and he also, Judge Hunter said it would be a, a last resort, we do have an indigent, um, worksheet that they can fill out, but I've seen a few times we tried to use it, the people that, that need this help, I mean, it's a, it's a fifteen-page document, like what do you have for your income, I mean, it's just, it's, it's just a silly application for a person that's in that position, you know, it just kind of adds insult to injury when you have to say, you know, I don't have a home or I don't have this, and I don't, I, I mean, and it, the one it's in English and most of the people that come in can't even speak Spanish to do that, so then we have to sit there and, and translate, so it's, it's just a bad process that we have overall for that, in my opinion.
Yes, I, I've done, uh, thank you, Mayor, I've done this prosecution in, in a city that has a, a community service program, the city of McAllen, and, uh, the idea there is that, that these folks are gonna be doing something of, of value to the city, um, in, in, in exchange for the money that they would pay to the city to find. So, the, the city of McAllen, um, sends the people who qualify to, to city facilities, they've, they've got, um, uh, a, a program at the library, and I think it's generally involves cleaning, cleaning the library, maybe the restaurants or air, public areas of the library, uh, the, the bus station and the recycling center, uh, are, are-
We already had them before.
Oh, did you?
The library and the-
How long ago was that?
That was a while.
It's been a while, more than some.
Did it work well? Does it work well?
No, they came one day and next day they will come.
It happens a lot in the county.
You won't, they don't like what you tell them.
Yeah.
And that was really the question, right, who, who will take over?
It wasn't successful at the end of the day.
We tried it, but it didn't work.
We would send them to do this and then in five minutes they were done, that's it, but remember you need hours, not minutes. Because they, the fifteen minutes, okay, I'm done, right? Anything you would send in, we would like, five minutes and we're back and we have to send them again. And I think you can, you can, so more work than, than-
In situations like that in McAllen, the way they handle that is that the, the, the head of the facility, uh, to which these, these folks are sent, send a report back to the court saying, um, defendant did not complete his community service hours, and then the judge, you know, issues a show, show cause order, brings the person back into court, generally gives them another chance, and, uh, when they blow that one off, the judge then reinstates the fine. Deducts whatever, you know, hours they did perform, but then the person has to pay the man.
I, I think you have to have the, the city agencies that are really prepared to do this before you do it. So that these folks don't go in and get done in five minutes. It's like volunteer with, uh, middle school kids and stuff like that, I mean, they're done right away and then just, I mean, you're done doing it. I mean, you really have to have somebody hardcore there.
Hours and minutes to-
Probably had a, a lot, largest things and facilities for them.
That was one of the reasons Judge Hunter suggested, like, but like, like the pet shelter agent, people that already are-
Like the things that, like, you mentioned, but we don't have that.
That's true.
Yeah, we will.
But if there was local ones that we wanted them to, like, so say if we wanted them to, that, that already, like, he wasn't necessarily thinking here because it is-
Unless we can, we can use the manpower, our, like, our local events, you know, to set up, to clean up, to help with, like, Big Heroes Run, to volunteer at those events, you know, that's something to think about, they manpower during our events, I don't, that's just something to think.
Yeah, it's something to say, I think, I mean, I, I just, that's why I didn't, yeah, there was no action, it was just more of just wanted to start the discussion and so if anybody had any thoughts about that.
Or maybe if somebody has some thoughts that they can put it on an agenda item.
Perfect.
And they will know. Um, I'll make a motion to go and let's move on, and I'll make a motion to go into executive session. Motion on the floor made by the mayor, going to executive session at seven oh nine, second of the Mr. Gonzalez.
Councilmember, uh, Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Worrell?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGaleo?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes, going to executive session at seven oh nine. We are going back into session at eight fourteen. Uh, reading item thirty, ordinance twenty-two oh two, consideration of possible actions to approve on first reading of ordinance twenty-two oh two regarding the sign regulation. Um, we have discussed with Mr. Ozuna the things we want to add and change, and, um, he's aware of the changes we want to make, so this is just the first reading, so we're gonna go on by that. And item fourteen-
I'll recommend taking action to approve the first reading.
Taking action to approve the first reading, okay.
I'm at both statements.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the signed ordinance, a second back. Motion on the floor made by the mayor, second event is turning to group the first reading, Randy.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Worrell?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGaleo?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes, motion passes. Um, we're also coming out of executive session and, um, going back to item eight. Regarding the city manager job search, um, we're going to instruct the city manager with the candidates that was chosen and if she can contact them for interviews for March the fifth and sixth at six P M, two on each day. Will be two interviews on March the fifth and two interviews on April, I apologize.
I'm like, hold on, I know, I'm, I know I'm tired, but, okay, you wrote fifth and-
April, Tuesday, April fifth. And Wednesday, April sixth at six P M, two each day. If you can contact and please send up those interviews and, um, in person at six P M, and, um, yes, yes, ma'am.
Those will be special meetings.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's, I, I don't think it's absolutely necessary.
You guys will give me the list.
Yes, ma'am.
Do I guess, or do I make them up?
Um, city manager board, Randy.
Okay, so, um, you guys all have with you this, I, I think most of it is duplicative of what I've sent you guys emails of throughout the last couple weeks, so I'll go through it again. Just stop me if there's more information that you want to know. I've had a meeting with the, uh, Fred Morris and Dee Dee, uh, I can't say her last name, so I'm not gonna butcher it. They actually, um, came out on Friday, as I mentioned earlier, um, I was able to walk the Marina with them and Mr. Worrell. We went over all of the things that need to be done, um, and they are going to write up the project list with, um, the Marina in mind, as far as my, uh, projects we want to use the ARPA funds on. So, um, they're also the, the ones that are gonna help, they're gonna work with this other grant that we approved tonight, um, to go out for, so hopefully with that grant, put money, if we get that money, then we can use more of the ARPA funds to do what the Marina needs done, which is um, the, the Marina-related things, the dredging or the, the, um,
Infrastructure.
Well, the infrastructure is gonna be taken care of hopefully by a different grant, which will help maximize what we can use the ARPA funds for. Cause the ARPA money is the only thing that we're gonna be able to use and actually do any Marina repairs with. So, if we can get other grants to pay for the, the infrastructure or the drainage in there, then they'll still make our money go further. The dredging or the boat ramps, thank you, I was, I was drawing a blank on the word. So, that's what we're trying to do by, I, by going for that other grant, being able to apply some of that fund to those areas so we can maximize the money for the Marina repairs. So, um, and then in, in addition, the other project that we will have with, um, with the ARPA funds, from my understanding from the council, will be the street improvement money that we are short with on the contract. So, those right now, we can have as many projects that we want to submit with ARPA and they can look at everything and we can start to kind of nar- narrow it down, that's pretty much what I've given them as far as our marching orders with the, with the ARPA at this point. Um, the only thing we have to do to use the ARPA money for the street improvement grant is to get them all of the documents. They have to make sure that grant was secured the proper way, you know, with the postings and all, which, which they were, but they just need all of that for, for their file. Um, so that kind of rolls us into the street improvement grant, we're still waiting on CLOR, um, to get us all the initial documents. They were supposed to meet with Mr. Cruz today to get the finalized on the insurance documents and all of the initial signage. And, um, once we do that, obviously that'll go to Mr. Ozuna for, for review. The Eco Tourism Center, I met with her, uh, Valerie Ramos, the project manager, we closed out our side of the ETA paperwork. And, um, the only thing that was pending was this last payment that you guys approved, uh, tonight, so I'll make that. Um, they're gonna, our final cost is two hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety cents, which we will get back from the county. And, um, then the, oh, I did contact, um, about just the Eco Tourism Center. The multipurpose and indoor facilities are not going to be available for use yet, it, hope, they're hoping within the next forty-five days. They're still waiting on furniture, there's some signage and stuff that needs to be done inside, so that's why that isn't being able to be, um, taken care of right now. And then, as we had mentioned in the open forum, the Big Heroes, uh, annual autism run, I had approved that run, um, already, it's on the calendar. I'm gonna work with, um, Martha and Stephanie to kind of last year, we didn't really advertise, I mean, we didn't do anything as the city for it, and so the chair would like to be a little bit more involved in helping them advertise, maybe having the city hand out water, whatever they think we can do as a part of that, so I'll update you guys as, as I get um, what, what they need from us to do to just try to help that event be more, um, just more widely known. And, um, the parks board meeting, I sent an email out into, for the parks board meeting, I'd like to have that, we're gonna have that on March twenty-ninth. What I'm looking for from this board is to start actively using our parks, maybe find some summer programs that our kids can do. You know, that's one of the things we're lacking around here is, is things for our kids to do within our community, you know, we have the center in Port Isabel, but we don't have things here and we have great opportunities with our parks and our Eco Tourism Center now and the, the walking trail and different things like that, that I think our parks community can really get behind, and they wanted to be involved in the last meeting that I was with, with them, they wanted stuff to do, and so I'm going to give them stuff.
Do you have a representative from the L B area there?
Do I have what?
Will you have a representative from the L B area at the parks board meeting?
Well, I wasn't yet, because this is just gonna be an initial meeting with them as far as kind of ideas of what they might want to go forward and do. And then from there, I was going to kind of-
I'm, I'm kind of on, I'm kind of on the outside of the going zone over the L area, but I think they just made it an actual rule that you can't fish to the reef.
Well, then that's something I should find out before I-
You should talk to Rusty.
Yes, before I suggest that, I mean, absolutely.
It's a good room.
My grandkids have come once again.
The price, the price, maybe you're talking about the city.
The city's parks committee, yes.
Yeah, I, I, I might show up at that meeting.
Oh, perfect, I'll, I'll copy you in on the agenda and, um, they're just, these were just kind of ideas off the tops of my head of things that we could do. I just, I feel like little day camps or little day things for people to do. I, I sometimes think people forget what all we have to do here, the walking trail, I sometimes think that, you know, if, if you're new, I, I mean, I just sometimes, I just wanna re-energize all of that, so.
Is, is it complete, or is, uh, do they need members on that?
Uh, it, it's, it's a whole, right now, that's actually one of the boards, it's the quickest one to fill out, so we don't need anybody, but you can be a, uh, we can kind of do like we do at the C V P and just kind of be in an honorary, uh-
No, I, I wasn't planning to be a part of it.
Come on, no, I, I, what I heard was.
I did talk to them, there's a lot of walking trail folks and there's equal-
And they had a lot of good ideas last June when we met, they had a lot of good ideas that just kind of fell flat, so I'd like to, mm-hmm, yeah, I'd be really lucky to have someone.
I recommended other folks too.
Okay, yeah. Um, so library, you can read that report, they're just moving fast and furious with the new schedule and they're really pushing hard, pushing the, the social media and just getting people back in the door. I did ask for to do some comparison looks over numbers, uh, the last couple years so we could keep track, you know, and have a better report in the next six months about how the Saturday operating is, is going. Um, court, we kind of touched on a little bit, I just gave the breakdown of the revenue that had been left on the table for twenty twenty-one. These are all the warrants I had talked about earlier that we ran, and all of this was done during business hours, there was no overtime done by- And all of this was done during business hours. There was no overtime done by myself or or Norma to get any of this done. And um we only, so so far, we will, well, no, it's, the process is complete. And I think we owed Judge Hunter one one hour for um for signing. That's it. So he was able to sign the rest of them during when he was here for for court, so.
And that's with you guys, we're doing two people's jobs.
Yes.
Getting that done.
Yes, and so we, and Crystal did help, like, should we utilize her when she was, you know, I mean, like, it was, it was a team effort, but but Norma and I ran it, you know, everything was, everything was done. No, there was no need. And now, when we run it on every month, uh, that took us through January twenty twenty one. Then we, you know, when we run it every month, we're talking twenty three, maybe twenty five, you know, documents total, so it'll be heavily feasible within. So that's all I got. And um unless there's anything that I missed that you guys have questions on that I said throughout the week, but that's um, that's all the stuff I'm working on and then obviously the training.
And welcome to first, it's your first meeting, correct?
Well, we're the last second.
Oh, you've sat in the first one.
I said.
Better officially we're.
Right.
So welcome and you're a wonderful asset, of course. I've heard great things about you and and I can already see things are running smoother and. Bottom of the board.
She can see my desk, that's why, that's why. Maybe I'll see my desk in a while.
That's very welcome. Thank you, Randy, for describing them. I'm especially impressed with what's happening with the library, the revitalization and revitalization that's going on, pushing forward for years and it's finally happening. The warrants that's been done, you know, we are under the impression that the previous round of warrants that was run was for this past year, twenty one to twenty one, but it wasn't. It was actually a lie and it was only actually for twenty twenty. So I'm very happy that you have pulled up on that. So as you guys can see, that's a hundred and forty one thousand dollars that was left on the table.
Right.
Um, among many other things, so um. And thank you for getting our boards involved too. I've been asking for that for a very long time too. It's important. There's wonderful people in our community that wants to volunteer and want to be involved and has great ideas, you know?
I've never had so many people call and go, when is my board gonna meet? You know, I mean, if you just don't have that. And I I sent the parks email out and everybody responded with them that same day that available, available.
Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments for any? No.
Thank you.
Motion for adjournment. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion on the floor to adjourn the meeting. Second, I'm Sir Gonzalez.
I'm so happy there. Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Worrell?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGale?
Yes.
One can't do it, just let it, no, I'm gonna be here, mom, eat corn doughnuts.
Not a good dinner.